All right, everyone, welcome to this evening's meeting. It is 7:48. We are called to order. Please rise and pledge the flag with us. And roll call, please, Angela.
Saba Al Zayed.
Here.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
James Fee. Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here. And Angela, just for the record, Mr. Fee did contact me before the meeting. He said he wouldn't be able to make it due to feeling ill.
Mr. President, I'd note for the record, we were in executive session from approximately 7:30 to approximately 7:50 with regard to personnel matters.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Mr. Truman, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. First up for council consideration would be a motion to hire Justin Brozki to the position of part-time police officer. And prior to that, if I may, I'll turn it over to Mayor Jack Seer. I believe she would have a few words to speak to regarding Mr. Brozki beforehand.
Yeah, thank you. Normally Chief Peretta would be happy to say something, but he's also unfortunately feeling ill this evening. So, Justin, he's 27 years of aid from Warrington, Pennsylvania. He's a 2013 graduate of Central Bucks High School South, a 2018 graduate of the Pennsylvania State University with a BS in criminology, and a 2021 graduate of the Temple University Police Academy. Brozki is an emergency medical technician and has been working in hospitals in his field. He's also a volunteer firefighter, serving with Warrington Fire Company. He enjoys hunting, the beach, and physical fitness. And he is present with his mother, father, mother and father, John and Denise, and his girlfriend Christina. So, welcome to Bridgeport, Justin.
I will make a motion to hire Justin Brozki.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to hire Justin Brozki as a part-time police officer. Any questions or comments from the council on that? Or from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then that's unanimous. Congratulations, Justin.
Okay, very good. And next up would be the oath ceremony for Officer Brozki.
All right, please repeat after me. I, Justin Brozki.
Aye, Justin Brozki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
I appreciate that we always have a crowd that likes to clap twice when we do these. And hey, folks, I know we are already running a bit behind, and we have a number of items on the agenda. So, if you came for the officer swearing in, thank you for being here, but you're certainly not obligated to sit through the rest of the exciting agenda. And have a great night, folks.
Congratulations.
All right, very good. Next up for council consideration is final land development application for 365 Prospect Avenue. And if the applicants would please step forward.
Good evening, council. John Walker here for the applicant, RDL 15 LLC. Jerry Lawrence is the principal for that, and he's here with us today. So, we're here today to ask for final land development application approval for this plan on the corner of Prospect and Holstein. We were before you earlier this year on the sketch plan. It has been submitted for the formal submission. It's been reviewed by your engineer. It's a clean letter. It will comply with all of the recommendations of the engineer. And essentially, what we're looking at here is a four-lot subdivision land development on the corner of Prospect and Holstein. If you're familiar with that property, it's somewhat of an eyesore of a property right on the corner with a garage-type building towards the rear of the property along Prospect. The garage will remain. That's currently used for off-site personal storage by Mr. Lawrence of vehicles. But the remaining houses, or it's one large house with multiple units, will be demolished, and there will be three additional lots, so a four-lot subdivision with the one lot remaining, with a one structure with three townhouse units, three stories, 2,100 square feet, garages and driveways. Familiar with what you have seen. New street trees will be installed, new sidewalk improvements, new paving improvements to the area will also be done. Essentially, the idea is that we're trying to make it look like the preferable townhouse units that you've seen in this area, and ideally right across the street, some new units just like that. So, it's a very similar feel. The location has been moved to that corner to try to keep it away from the neighbors there and to add that additional buffering. So, we believe that ultimately, at the end of the day, even though it's not a huge development, just three new units, it will significantly increase the beautification of that area and the public improvements around that corner. Happy to answer any questions. There were three waiver requests. One of them's more of a technical to not provide the illustrations, and again, that's because it's a small development and we're pointing to across the street as to what we're looking to look for. The other ones were to try to not have the driveways and the garage as more centered to the application. But again, that's what this area has, and we tried to mimic what is in the area. And the third is simply to utilize a map for the existing area. So, nothing related to any planning aspects to the plan. Happy to answer any questions. And I said Ted Demetrick is here from Penonee, is the engineer for the plan that's been reviewed. And again, it will be, will comply once it's all cleaned up prior to plan recording, if approved. And Mr. Lawrence is here if there's any questions related to the property.
Good evening, Mr. Walker. How you doing?
Good, Mr. Bello, how are you?
Good. Mr. Woody and I had opportunity to discuss Gannett Fleming's letter of July 28th and Penonee's response of August 4th. I think I know what happened here, but I would like Mr. Woody to comment on it and perhaps walk through that with you so the record's clear.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Mr. Walker, I guess I was a little confused by one of your statements about that you had a clean letter from me, which I don't know that I would 100% agree with that. I have not seen, to the best of my knowledge, the last plan that I saw was dated May 13th of 2002 with no revision dates. I don't recall seeing anything else of that.
By clean, I mean everything that you're stating that you're wanting to see. We will comply and add that to the plan as you've requested. Without, I think, resulting in a significant change to the actual plan itself. So, it will be cleaned up, and all of your comments will be addressed to your satisfaction prior to plan recording, if approved.
Okay.
And that's what I meant by clean.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry for the misnomer.
No, thank you for that clarification, because there are several, you know, it's a three-page letter with some issues, and I know that the waivers cover a couple of those items. But, you know, there are some items, you know, zoning items regarding that existing garage on Lot, you know, Lot 4. Can you explain what the use of that will be?
And as noted on the plan, it is what is currently used for off-site vehicle storage. That currently is a non-conforming commercial use, and it's expected to keep that non-conforming commercial use, because it's not a residence, it's not like a garage that you would park your personal vehicle in, because there's no one living on that site. It's been used as a repair garage, and since that time's been used as a garage for off-site personal vehicle storage. And we will tailor that to the zoning code language that's more accurate for purposes for revising the plan to indicate per your letter.
Very good. I guess for the borough's sake, Mr. Bello, you know, Mr. Truman, and Mr. Wanzik, to make a determination as the zoning officer, that that indeed is a grandfathered use that is, you know, allowed to be there, because as I noted in the comment, that the use of a garage is not a permitted primary use. But to Mr. Walker's point, it is grandfathered.
And we did that discussion with Mr. Wanzik early on, and we were of the impression that he's agreeable to the non-conforming status of that. And quite frankly, at the end of the day, if, there is room for residential space on top, so the plan itself, you could throw some people up there and call it a garage. I mean, it's not perfect, but if we don't believe that it would, and that's not what's desired, but at the end of the day, it wouldn't stop the plan from reaching conformity if you had to reach conformity at that point. Essentially, it would be a small apartment with a large garage.
Okay. I'd have to, if indeed that was something we'd have to...
Yeah, I don't know if I would agree with that. I think that's an argument. I think there are other arguments that might be a little bit more palatable, but I don't know the history of that garage. I don't want to take a position tonight that's detrimental to your application or supportive of your application. I just don't know how long it's been used for off-site storage. And certainly, the gentleman here wants to speak up, I think.
This is Mr. Lawrence, and he's more familiar with the property. You can come to the mic, Mr. Lawrence.
So, I purchased that property in, I think it was February of 2019. Prior to that, it was owned by Lozniak Electric for, I believe, in excess of 50 years. And it was an electrical contractor business, and they used that facility to run their business, and they had their trucks there and their warehousing supplies and so on and so forth. So, it was used as a commercial use and storage facility for in excess of 50 years. I don't know if that makes sense.
Now, I know which property you're talking about. I used to play handball off the wall in that alley, so I know exactly where you are. I think Mr. Woody and I should have an opportunity to speak about this, just to make sure we're on the same page before we advise council. But why don't we finish, see if there's any other issues, and then the pleasure of council will win the day, whether we table this or whether we approve it tonight.
One question I had from the comments in the application from the county are that there's a sidewalk issue that they brought up in terms of making it safer for wheelchairs, accessibility, et cetera. Is there anything you're able to do about that sidewalk evening or make it more accessible?
And I can bring up Mr. Demetrick to address that, but I believe, we don't believe that it is going to be an issue, because it will retain a straight sidewalk. There'll be the curb cuts, but the sidewalk itself's not going to be depressed.
If I may, Mr. Walker, to Mr. Heil's point, and this is, you know, I understand the county's point of view, but I can tell you from a practical point of view, to not have a monolithic pour, all one pour apron into a driveway. Right? And as opposed to what they're, I believe they're saying is they would prefer a sidewalk be poured that's a level, and then the apron just be the little piece in that two-foot that goes from the side. My experience is that cars bottom out. So, unless you're driving an SUV, you know, it's not a good practice. I understand the issue of ADA accessibility and concern over that, but unless you have a longer apron, you're going to create problems for vehicular traffic. So, I'm not a big proponent, Mr. Heil, of having the sidewalk and then the apron. I'm more, I believe it's a better practical method to have a single apron from the road to the paving.
And you think you have ways of addressing that concern? Anyway, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Woody, too.
We believe that there will be the sidewalk, and I'll bring up Mr. Demetrick to be sure, but we think that when the apron is laid, there will be a straight surface.
Ted Demetrick with Penonee Associates. So, really, the curb that's there really isn't that much of a reveal. So, we're not talking about six or eight inches here. We're only talking a couple inches. So, for that apron to come up, it's not a huge grade change. So, I don't really feel that cars are going to bottom out coming up over that concrete ramp. So, it's not going to be a monolithic pour. The plan kind of shows it, and I think that's why the planning commission was confused. It kind of looks like a monolithic pour, but it isn't. It's going to be a separate sidewalk and then the concrete apron.
But ultimately, we satisfy whatever the borough professional staffs would like that site to be.
Right. And you'll note, if I may, back to one of my general comments, number three. It says, "The extent of sidewalk and curb replacement needs to be field-determined and reflected on the plan. The condition of the sidewalk and curbing along Holstein and in front of Lot 4 may need replacement." So, you know, we would certainly need the borough code enforcement officer to go out there and analyze whether we're putting new sidewalk and curbing in, as the comment in my letter stated, that we haven't come to any agreement or solution on that comment.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, so recently, I think all the curb and sidewalk has been replaced on Holstein. And I do have pictures here I could show to the council members, if you'd like to see them.
Replaced by who, if I may ask?
So, when we purchased, when we purchased the property, there were certain conditions for the borough to issue a certificate, and it included Mr. Wanzik visiting the site and identifying sections of the sidewalk that were in disrepair. And at that time, I agreed with him. I went ahead and replaced the sidewalk on Holstein Street from the start of the property all the way up to the corner, including the corner, including putting in the ADA-required sidewalk and so forth. The sidewalk on Prospect, he determined at that time, one or two sections needed replaced, some very minor stuff needed replaced, but that we didn't need to replace the entire sidewalk on Holstein at that time. And just for those of you maybe not familiar with the property, there is already a driveway and curb cut in two places on Holstein, including to go into the yard that's next to that building that's probably 15 feet of a curb cut there anyway with ramp. And the sidewalk is, as Ted indicated, very, very low. The curb there is not significant.
I know the area very well. Like, Mr. Bello, I grew up in the town, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys were being cognizant of that, and it's not like I needed one solution. I'm looking at all the notes. Sometimes it's hard to tell what goes against the other thing. So, I want to make sure that that was not neglected.
I think the council is all, unless somebody has something different to say, I think we're all in support of the project. We know that building, and we know this would be an improvement. Just need to make sure that everything gets buttoned up here.
And ultimately, whatever council and professional staff would like to do with it, we're able to have it done.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. You know, obviously, some of the comments in my July 28th, 2022 letter are just cleaning up some inconsistencies. There's some numbers wrong, you know, we need some calculations resolved, you know. Obviously, the planning commission has seen it. We typically see the application that goes to the planning commission before it goes, you know, and the borough reviews that, but obviously, that happened. The, some of the things in the subdivision land development commentary are waivers that you are asking for this evening from council. We need to see that there is certification from Pennsylvania American Water that they'll serve, serve the property. There's the issues of the sanitary sewer, you know, to Lot 1. We need relocate it. We have, have planning modules been submitted to the PADDP?
No, no, we will do that, though.
So, that's obviously something that needs to be done and approved. You know, we need to, is there sanitary service to Lot 4, to the garage?
Yes.
There is? Because I don't, I don't know that it was shown on the drawings, so we're going to need that, and we need to understand, you know, that. And then there are a couple of things in general. I mentioned one of them, and you addressed that, so we'll circle back with Mr. Wanzik on how he feels about those issues. And then, just so you're aware, due to the significant number of paving cuts, there may be a repaving of Prospect that's needed from curb to curb, if I'm stating the borough's policy, right, Mr. Truman?
And we're familiar with that, and that was actually discussed at sketch plan levels.
So, that, Mr. Bello, kind of is the summary of my letter, you know. We typically see many of those things addressed in the final plan, you know, before we're looking at them, but, you know.
Those sound rather significant, so I'm, right, so I'm a little bit nervous about saying yes, even though I think I'm in general, I don't have any problems generally, but I think it might be better to just table to your satisfaction on that those things have been addressed, and then we can more comfortably approve, so we're not approving with you not being comfortable as an engineer.
Yeah, the other question I would have for Mr. Walker is, do you know where we are in the 90-day cycle?
I think you're, if you're up on it, if not already.
So, what you need, what council would need to do is either then, if you're so inclined to table it for a meeting to address these issues, and it's certainly whatever council wants to do, you would neither need to get an extension from the applicant or you'd need to deny it.
The way I always do it is the applicant, I would invite the applicant to ask for the extension. And the alternative to that, the only alternative I can think of was some sort of contingent approval this evening, but with a real tight deadline to get our responses. So, it's the pleasure of council. If council wants to table this, that's no problem, and I would expect, Mr. Walker, that you would ask for an extension and not prejudice a 90-day period.
Absolutely. What choice do I have? But obviously, it could be, and we would, we were fully expecting any approvals to be conditioned upon complying with this letter, to the satisfaction of Mr. Woody.
Sure.
So, that was, and I think it's always...
And, you know, obviously, we would like to have all that stuff at the approval meeting, when it is, when you're able to. So, that having been said, council certainly has the right to grant you an approval this evening, conditioned upon satisfying all Mr. Woody's comments. And we should talk about any waivers, whether they're waivers that we wish to grant, but I don't want to stand in the way of something that council may want. Council wants to table it, great. Council wants to conditionally approve it, that's fine by me as well.
And if I believe that it required a replanning of significant changes, I don't believe we'd be here today. We would have resubmitted, and it's our intention that we would be able to address these items, which again, for some are just administrative, some are just quick changes to the plan.
Understood.
And obviously, that would be done prior to recording a plan.
Right.
That you would have to sign off on anyways as council. So.
Yeah.
It's really, as you said, Mr. Bello, it's up to council. If council wants additional time for us to resubmit...
Did we solve that issue with regard to paving that other street? Was that something, I heard you say we talked about it, but I was distracted.
It's simply that that was something that was made aware to us at the time of the sketch plan, when we were here before the sketch plan.
So, if...
We acknowledged that that was something that could be a possibility and need to be done according to...
So, if the borough was inclined to grant the application, you would accept as a condition that that sidewalk be paved?
I believe it is on the letter already, and if you wanted to underline that as well...
A yes works.
So, that the general condition is that to the extent that it must be consistent with borough requirements, a full mill and overlay may be required due to the numerous utility cuts to be performed. If Mr. Woody or Mr. Wanzik says, yeah, you got to do it, we'll have to do it as a condition of plan approval.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you have any questions first?
I would just ask, I know there's a lot of moving parts to it, so what are the, what's the risk here if we were to go ahead and approve this, given that it seems like there's significant, I don't want to say there's unknowns, because you've already stated that you're happy to do whatever needs done, but from our side?
I don't, I would suggest the risk is minimal. It's more a lack of formality for the benefit of substance. I mean, I don't hang my hat on formality.
And I would submit that, again, it's not going to change what has been shown to you as far as setbacks or driveways. It's just going to be additional notes, you know, the plumbing pipes for the plans.
Yeah, and I understand the situation you're in, but I would suggest to you that this council wants everything done for the final approval. We would be accommodating you otherwise, and I have no objection with the accommodation. But, you know, when we're having a conversation with a future client, you can say, hey, Bello said, next time, submit it beforehand.
Absolutely. We're happy to do whatever council would like to do.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable if I felt like everything was more lined up and that I felt more confidence in what Mr. Woody was saying. I think we're going to say yes pretty quickly, like, so I would feel better with you coming back and addressing those concerns and us giving approval then, because I don't want to be in a position where I'm saying yes with all of these okays, if Ed is okay with it, because it just seems like, usually when we do that, there's a couple things, like, fix this one sidewalk or fix this one pipe and...
Yeah, typically, Mr. Heil, to your point, you know, conditions that we typically see is planning modules, right? We'll condition approval upon receipt of the planning module from the DEP, right? There's conditions with, you know, the approval from the water company are the typical things. Usually, the engineers have worked out all the details, and I'll certainly leave it to the smarter people in the room, to the attorneys, that the danger, I guess, is that I don't agree with the developer's engineer, right? You know, if there's a, if there's an issue where what my letter says isn't agreeable, then he's going to do it.
Yeah, and I don't want to get into the semantics of this, but if that were the case, the approval wouldn't be, so...
And obviously, the engineer has to sign off on the plan, so he's not going to sign this way, so, yeah.
As long as that's understood, Mr. Bello, I, you know, it's the pleasure of council.
And again, we're happy to do what you'd like to do. If you want to say, hey, we don't want to waste our time dealing with this again at the next meeting, and do that conditions of approval, fine. If you'd like us to come back with a cleaned-up plan, we'll do that as well, because we do believe that it is not an issue to clean these items up on the plan.
I would feel better with a cleaned-up plan going... I would feel better with a cleaned-up plan going through, and I don't know about anyone else. I don't want to take, talk for anyone.
It kind of sounds like the list can be checked off rather quickly, so if you guys don't mind just regrouping and making sure they're all checked for us, you can come back as soon as the next council meeting, maybe, and get it rolling. But I think I agree, we should probably...
Mr. Truman, can we get them on next meeting?
Provided, provided the outstanding issues are addressed, absolutely.
The good news is we meet the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, so you don't have a long wait if they elect to do that.
Yeah, obviously, what we have to have our engineer make the changes, they have to then be provided to your engineer to review that.
Not the day before.
You know, I think it's just a matter of, at this point in time, whenever Mr. Woyden has the opportunity to review, I'm ready to come back. I can follow up with Mr. Truman at that time.
Yeah, the only request I would have is I don't get it the day before the next meeting, you know, to have an opinion for that meeting, but if, you know, if I'm given, you know, a week before the meeting, I will get it done and reviewed in comment letter back to the borough.
I think, I think my feeling is, I want to see the project happen. I know the property. But if this isn't generally what we do, if there's a, I sometimes I get nervous about deviating, you know, from our current, the standard procedure. Who knows when that comes around to bite us later. But I, Mr. Heil, I would concur then.
Mr. Walco, Mr. Demetrius, do you believe you'd be able to deliver a follow-up response letter with all this cleared up by September 20?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, we could.
And, yeah, I see no reason we can't get this on the 9/27 agenda. Just for one, one point of clarification for me, gentlemen, the street tree, the existing street trees on Holstein are slated to be removed? The ones on Prospect would remain?
No, no, the ones on Prospect, yeah.
Because of the, because of the new cuts for the driveway.
Okay, I had those footlocked.
Well, we are going to add two, though, on Holstein, two new trees.
Okay, so the pre-existing would be removed from Prospect and replaced on Holstein with the, with the pre-existing ones that are already there?
Yes, if I understand that correctly, yes. There's two existing trees on Prospect that will be removed.
Right, there's two on both, there's two on Holstein now, and there's two on Prospect. So, the two would be removed from Prospect due to the curb cuts?
Yes.
And would complement the pre-existing two on Holstein?
Yes.
So, would we, just to wrap this up, if this is the direction we go, and I think we would, we would need a vote just to table this until the next meeting?
And before you do that, I'll put on the record...
Please do.
I'll put on the record today, and I can follow up with a letter to Mr. Bello that we are, we will waive the 90-day requirement on the N P C for this council to render a decision. And let's just say that to the end of October, just in case something was to happen.
So, we would be looking for a motion to table this, and then, would that be pending the, the extension?
Pending the receipt of...
Pending the receipt of the letter, requesting the extension, looking to table this until the next meeting. Okay.
We need something to make.
Yeah, we would need a motion for that.
I will make that motion to table and do those things.
I can second that motion.
Thanks. Motion, Mr. Heil, second, by Ms. Funahashi, to table this, also pending the letter, asking for the extension until the end of October. Yes?
Mr. President, or Mr. Bello, would then, it probably would still be a good idea to act on the waivers?
No.
No? Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Woyden. Any other questions from council on that, or the public? All right, thanks, and all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Used to be barbed wire on the top of that fence, too, by the way. Yeah, if you lost the ball, it was over.
You still got it?
And I think I can talk to my client about a condition to allow you to continue to play along the side of that garage, Mr. Bello. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I'm getting into these meetings personally. Everyone always leaves when I get up.
If we swear you in for something, we can do it beforehand.
I usually get sworn at, not sworn in. Members of council, some of you I've met before, and you see me a lot, some of you are new, so, my name's Tony Maris, I'm from The Developer. For those of you who don't know, we have this little project going on in the borough, about 35 acres right behind the building. We've started a lot of work, and in the course of redeveloping an old site, there's some things you find. So, we have two zoning requests for you tonight, and then the next thing is a TIF. We're asking for your support of two variance requests we have to your zoning hearing board. That hearing is scheduled for next Thursday. I've given Mr. Truman two of those items, but I've handed out the exhibits, and we do acknowledge receipt of Mr. Woyden's review letter of these.
Mr. Maris, are we, are we starting with gas line Ford Street exhibit, or gas coordination?
Look for the gas, I'm going with the slip, that'll be the first one. There's a one Ford, there's a four and a three pack, that's the first plan, and then the second one. So, I think it's, the coordination one, I think is the next. I'm just waiting for these zips, so everyone can... Council has the benefit of seeing the plan. So, there are two pages in front of you. One shows a four-pack and a three-pack, four units and three units on one Ford Street. The exhibit behind that shows a combined building. Historically, our plan, this plan here, this is how we originally, this one to start, this is what we started with, and this is in our current plan set. What we found was, right here where all this line work is, there's a Pico gas regulator, and if you were to drive down Ford Street, you see this little pole come up, a little solar panel. And so, we surveyed it, and when we laid our building, and we found out that Pico gas regulator was going to be under one of our buildings. And Pico said to us, that can't be. We built it and we measured it. So, I said, well, I've surveyed it, and I'm pretty sure we're right, but how did you get to this? They said, well, our contractor took a tape measure from the center of the street and measured it. High degree of certainty. So, when we went out and measured it, their response was, oh, crap, just with a different second word. And they realized that they were outside of the right-of-way and outside of their easement. We could have forced them to move that. We've had a great relationship with Pico, much like we've had with the borough, and we said, look, you're going to have to shut down the entire gas supply for this region in order to move this for months as we're heading into the winter. There has to be a solution. And by historical background, council had previously supported, and your zoning hearing board had given approval for, a string of no more than six units like this, or 12 units in a row. This would, our solution was to combine these buildings up, and Keith, that's the next plan. So, by sliding that three-pack that was up here, up closer to this, down, and combining it with this building, so this four-pack stayed where it is, we took away the middle part, we were able to avoid that Pico regulator, not lose units, and the benefit to that is, is Pico just has to move a vent pipe a little bit, which they're going to do, so that it's far enough away from these homes, so that if blows off ever, there's never a risk of gas getting into the home. They're actually right at the borderline, they've asked to move it, we've agreed. I'm asking council tonight to support a variance request, so we can relieve the hardship of not making Pico move their regulator and burdening a significant portion of Bridgeport and Montgomery County with allowing us to have 14 units in a row instead of 12, which you previously recommended approval for elsewhere in the project, subject to the condition that that approval for 14 only apply to this lot, which is called Lot 2. So, that's variance request number one to council. Questions, comments?
I was wondering, does that reduce the value of any of the properties?
Does not. I mean, all of the sale values, I mean, these are stacked townhouses, it's one extra unit than the one, it's one extra building unit compared to what's inside the job already, so if there's a 12-pack, six builds in a row, this would just be seven. So, it's not going to impact the values anyway. Theoretically, from a sales standpoint, I guess it takes away two end units, but these are really designed to be more, what I'll call, these are the lowest-priced units coming into the community, so they're meant to be an affordable product, a small, affordable product for new homeowners, young professionals, people wanting to move close to commuting routes, and be able to afford a home on a first-time basis in Bridgeport and in Upper Marion schools. So, that's really what this product is targeted to, so it doesn't have a detrimental impact.
And this, I don't remember if this is familiar to, an older sketch of this, does that create more green area in that corner then, as a result, or does it, not much? It's not...
Maybe, because the driveways all shift a little bit. There might be a little bit more openness to the one end, so you don't, you don't have a green spot in the middle, you got some, you got, you got some green, more green down here instead of this green patch in the middle. I think it's relatively negligible. It actually works out from a traffic standpoint a little bit better, let's just locate the driveway a little bit better, do some other things here. So, that's, that's the first variance request that we're going to ask you to support, and I said we are going to your zoning hearing board next Thursday night, the 22nd.
I would just mention that I have no legal objection.
I really think it's a minimal ask, all things considered, with everything else going on, so I don't see a very good reason to oppose it, especially since it doesn't change anything much about the project.
It really stops us from hurting Pico, so.
Can I just ask what the, like, why Lot 2 is all crossed out like that, on the, that diagram, but not the other? Yeah.
Well, all this stuff here, this is underground detention, these are pipes underground, this is stuff that Mr. Woyden likes to look at and make sure that things called inverts and outfalls all work, and the pipe sizes are correct. He gets very excited about this stuff. He likes to see more of this.
I'll trust his judgment on that one.
What's the other variance, then?
Okay, the other variance relates to the apartment building, and I have some slides later to show the apartment. You're, so this is, like, kind of, maybe we need one, maybe we don't. Mr. Bello and I talked about it, we wanted to show it to council, so you understood. We're asking for the variance just as a belt and suspender, because it's also something Mr. Wanzick could probably give me an interpretation on, but since we're coming back to the zoning hearing board anyway, this makes it easy. For those of you who are new to council, in the TIF presentation, I have a small picture of what the building looks like. A lot of people have seen this building already. I would have bought another rendering if I thought a little bit more. But to give you an orientation, this will be what's called Anderson Drive out here, I mean, sorry, this is Continental Drive, and this will be Anderson Drive back here, this road base. So, this is Conchahoc and Brewing, and this is the river. While we're at this point on the grade of the road to the last occupied floor, which is how the building code defines height, we are 63 feet plus minus to this floor, about 74 to this height, which technically qualifies under your zoning ordinance, and we meet your height definition. The problem is that there's a grade slope that happens here in this driveway, and when you get back to this part of the building, while we're still under 75 feet here, we got up to about 90 feet here at the back of the building. So, and I think we could zoom in a little bit more, so I can see the distinction. I'm getting old, I can't see anymore. So, yeah, so around the terrain, around the terrain here, we're 84 feet conditioned height for 75 feet, so there's about nine feet of difference front to back of the building. Depending on how you interpreted your ordinance, I could be over the height limit. And then, there's a rooftop amenity up here, these are elevator pits, this is not an occupied floor, and there's no living up here, but we do have this really cool rooftop amenity that we've shown to the borough. And if you averaged them, I come in technically below the average, but again, you're measuring relative grades. Rather than relying on an interpretation, having someone questioned, and we felt it was just better to come to you, talk with Mr., we talked, discussed this with Mr. Woyden, he makes note of it in his review letter as well. I've spoke, discussed this with Mr. Bello at length. I felt it was best to come here, because you guys have been great, and you've been very supportive of everything we're doing. There is no issue with fire access, because you do have a parking lot that goes around the building, you have road access to the front, the rooftop is accessible. You know, we have elevator, this is elevator, this is pedestrian access. At the rear height here of the building, the last occupied floor can be reached by a ladder truck. So, I think from that standpoint, we're, we're good, but technically, if there's an interpretation of being over the allowed height in the mixed-use, in the mixed-use river district, I wanted to ask for the variance, your support for a variance tonight, so I can go to your zoning hearing board. So, that's the second one.
Yeah, I would just mention for council that if I were forced to render an opinion tonight, I would say he's compliant. I'd rather not do that, since they're going to the Z H B. Let them cross, dot that i and cross those t's, but I don't see this as a major issue at all.
And I appreciate you coming in and doing it this way, rather than relying on a, relying on an opinion. But both of these, as far as I'm concerned, I think both variances are more than reasonable, given the project.
Thank you.
And what is exactly the wording on the variance, then? Could we, we say...
Support, but motion is...
But what is the variance, then, wording-wise, that we would be supporting, like, that they're asking for? What, because you're not asking for...
The height limitation contained in the mixed-use river district for this building, as shown on this plan, as shown at these cross elevations for this height, so that, you know, you're protected.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you're, like, this number, sometimes a wording isn't sure.
If you wanted to use the numeric reference, Mr. Heil, it would be relief from sections
So, we could support the application with regards to those two, those two items, right?
So, what would be the, the resolution that I would say?
I would...
With that in mind, I'll make a motion to support the application with those variances approved.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Heil, the second, from Ms. Gundrum, to support this application. Any other, support the application to the zoning hearing board. Additional questions or comments from council? All right, then the public? All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Truman, who's going to communicate that? Would that be you, or would that be Mr. Wanzick?
I will.
I don't have to worry about it. Okay.
I just might need it for a couple of the numbers. So, if it pleases council and Madam Mayor, this is a discussion now about something we've talked with the borough a lot for the last two years, which is a TIF. If you want to hit the next slide, Keith, just so, for those of you who haven't seen this plan before and are new to council or new to this plan, it's a mixed-use development. We have 262 multifamily units, 356 four-sale townhomes, which are under contract to Lennar, so we'll divide them the lots, and Lennar will build the homes. There's 7,000 square feet of retail and commercial space at the corner of Depot and Second. We have a walking trail we're putting in between a big retaining wall we're building to bring the site out of the floodplain. We have riverfront access that we've, that your engineer, and we've worked with council before, on the design of that. There's parking along the river, there's a dog park and a playground and amenitized...
Just to be clear, that riverfront access is to benefit the entire borough?
Right, everything here is shown as to be, is to be dedicated to the borough, as borough accessible. And one of, you know, one of those points that was made in a prior conversation is, this is one of the few times that we're getting to make wholesale real estate, because the property as it currently sits in the borough generates about $70,000 to $75,000 in annual taxes, and the reason that is, is it sits in a floodplain. So, we are, as the next slide will show, we're investing about $11 million in terms of construction cost between retaining wall, imported soil, you see the big mounds down there, relocating a forest main with Upper Marion. And that's all I'll say on that, in the words of Forrest Gump. And then, so there's a lot of, some extraordinary costs, but there's also some real benefit to doing that. So, we're taking a piece of property that really couldn't be developed, and we're making it valuable to the borough, to the county, and to the school district. it valuable to the borough, to the county, and to the school district. Importantly, the property already accounts in the school district's plan for background growth, because it's been on the development logs for so long through the various failed developments before us, that they've already built this into their background growth. So there's no unexpected impact, negative impact to the schools. Next slide, please. So for those of you who haven't heard this before, a TIF is not a tax abatement. It's an incremental financing plan. So essentially, the way it works is we take the area of our project, the borough has already designated to say previously as blighted. It creates a TIF district, which would overlay this, and then the tax revenues from this district are used to finance essentially a bond or a loan. And we borrow against that to do a variety of public improvements, which would, we pay prevailing wage. We don't necessarily have to hire unions, but we pay prevailing wage. So we're an open shop, so we would take union contractors anyway. And the incremental, the benefit of this is we would use it for things like the retaining wall, the trail, the roads, and the sewer systems, and anything else that's a public improvement. So it's not used to build the homes, it's not used to build the apartment building. It's used only for those costs of infrastructure, which benefit the borough and would be dedicated to the borough. So it's for a public improvement. And essentially, the way we've set this up is, and the next slides will show, we are asking the borough to pledge a portion of the future tax revenue, and I'll get to what that numbers look like in the future, over a 20-year period, for us to be able to draw $5 million out of that to offset some of these improvements. And we had met with borough council about this two years ago when we started this project, and we had to work out a lot of details. Since then, just for council's edification, our construction costs on the site are up 46% on a two-year basis. And that's not because anybody did anything, it's just because everything went up. And I'm glad we bought some of the stuff when we did, because it's all up again. So, once, and once, we're not asking the borough to dedicate, or the county, we're asking the county to participate in this too. We're not asking you to dedicate all of your tax revenue from this project, we're asking you to dedicate 50% of it from a financing standpoint. 50, 52, 48, 55. One part of the process of this is after the end of tonight, we're going to ask council to make a recommendation to appoint someone to a TIF committee that when the RDA, which is the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, forms a TIF committee, you'll have a member that sits on that board along with the county, and that's how this would get recommended for approval in whatever format that happens. So this is kind of an initial step to ask you to do that. And like I said, this is not an abatement, so it's not, you're not waiving taxes, you're actually pulling them forward and using them to your benefit in the immediate, in the present time, rather than over the future. Next slide, please. So I mentioned before, this is what the building generally will look like. We're still working on colors and schematics. This is kind of a sampling of the rooftop amenity. We are proposing to put a pool on the rooftop of a wood-framed building. You might ask how we're going to do that. We're going to carry the steel all the way back down through the building and tie it down to the ground. This is a sample of what the lobby would look like. It's mostly Studio 1 and two bedrooms. There are only, there are a maximum of six three-bedrooms. There was zoning relief worked on this. In terms of the unit mixes and sizes, that building's design, Mr. Wanzak has a set of those building plans into him. Lot of, lot of cool stuff. Conshok and Brewing has asked if they can run a direct tap from their facility up through the building to the rooftop, so I think we're half kidding. There's actually a building in Denmark that does that, apparently. So, Mr. Schenck's nodding his head, he seems to. The next slide is a sample of the townhouses that Lennar is proposing to build. Next slide, please. So we're asking, we're not asking you to vote tonight on the TIF. We're asking you to consider appointing a committee member when the RDA calls for that. But just to give you, these are some of the costs. We've got, on top of everything else done to date, we've got additional $125,000 set aside for additional remediation. We figured there's something we're going to find. The PICO high-voltage line and water, and the sewer forest mains, this is water, but the forest main, are about $3.2 million in extraordinary cost. We are going to eliminate that line down along the river, which is on a bunch of old poles. When we first went to PICO and asked them the cost for that, it was $800,000. The final cost came in at $2.1 million to remove that line inside the job. So there's a retaining wall that's built along the river. The wall will come up about eight to 12 feet, average 10 feet across it, plus the homes will come up beyond that. For those of you who are new to council, one of the interesting things is, what I just showed last year, because we were able to model after that happened, that we would have had no negative impact on the borough or any, all cross or downstream properties. And generally, I believe your engineer would concur that our improvements to the stormwater system will benefit the borough in every other type of rain event other than a catastrophic type of hurricane, because all the water that flows down in your combined sewer system and gets down in there and gets inundated is now, we're going to pick that up and get it out to the river much quicker. And then, you know, the dirt we're bringing in and placing and compacting has a value of about $6 million, so we've got about $11 million in extraordinary costs. One of the things that always is discussed in the TIF is about four. Without a TIF, we're about a 6% return on our capital, which most developers would not do. Most developers look at 12 or 14%. Given all the cost increases, even with a TIF, we're at a 10%. We like this project, we like this borough, but we really need this, this TIF, you know, to do this.
It has no basis or consideration, but just out of curiosity and for the benefit of some of the new council people, what's the overall investment in this property?
Funny you should ask that, Mr. Bello. So the total private investment is about $122 million in total investment. When we're done, the net fiscal benefit to all taxing bodies is net, that's, fiscal benefit's different than tax revenue. The tax revenue combined is about $4.87 million for all taxing bodies. The net fiscal benefit is about $2.75 million. So on a property that's producing, that's benefit. That means after you account for school kids, police, fire, safety, trash, everything else, plowing of the streets, everything, there's a $2.75 million net fiscal benefit. And I think the borough's number is like 1.9 or 1.8 of that number in the extrapolated sense of that. So when I say we're making new taxable real estate, it's like an island popping up out of the ground. I mean, it really is a chance to be transformative, and for council's edification, when we're done, this project will increase the population of the borough by almost one-third.
And you're not saying it's a million-dollar benefit one time, like a lump sum of money? I think that seems to be.
Every, that's the, in that annual fiscal benefit, every year, forever. So, just, and you know, just the next slide, this just shows.
Actually, do you mind just a quick question on the, talking about the storm drainage? Mr. Woodin, would you say this is, this is a positive? I don't know that would check any boxes, but this is a positive step toward all of those things that we see that the EPA would like to have done in our borough and our system?
Absolutely, Mr. Schenck, Mr. President, yeah. And you know, Mr. Truman and I have talked and we're working on, you know, moving forward now that the borough's NPDES permit was approved by DEP, which was a de facto approval, excuse me, of your long-term control plan. And there are projects in that long-term control plan that would dovetail very nicely.
Thank you. That's, that's good news.
Just for, this was kind of the historical construction cost numbers going across for lumber, aluminum, and steel. So you can kind of see, this is what happened in 2020, since, I mean. So the next slide talks a little bit about revenues. I already mentioned this, council has this. The next, next slide, the project will add $149.8 million in additional market value to the tax basis for this. There's 1,200 direct and indirect construction jobs, which is all the jobs necessary to manufacture and build everything here. Some of those are in the county, some of those will be in the borough. The project's a private, public-to-private investment, construction of the infrastructure to assist the ones having issues, and increase in real estate tax basis over 20 years for all three taxing bodies. Importantly, median incomes, the median household income in Bridgeport, at least according to the US Census Bureau, is $54,000. The rest of Montgomery County is $93,000. I think this is important, it's a fact for council to keep in mind as we talk with the county and other bodies about how, why this is so important and so vital. The average home price here will probably, the stack product we talked about, it will start in the threes and probably go up through the fives for the stuff down along the river. Our rents are in the mid-twos, we're projecting mid to high twos, which is probably 50 cents to 75 cents below the next closest township, like Conshohocken, or certainly King of Prussia. So when we talk, when you hear discussions about things about being affordable, we're not talking about subsidizing affordable here, we're talking about affordable so that people who either live in Bridgeport or people who want to live close to rail service can have a product in a great school district and a convenient location without having to pay King of Prussia or Conshohocken prices. But it's still going to be above the average income, in some cases, of the current population. So this is, rising tide raises all ships, this is a rising piece of ground, raises all real estate values.
Yeah, and as, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but as we've been talking about this for years now, we want to make our borough attractive to the people who are going to buy these new homes or rent them, et cetera. And also, we make, we're making a promise to people who live here that this is a benefit to them. And so what we're doing here to make sure that the businesses are doing better, and I think that's something we can see happening, that the residents are going to get a net benefit out of this, is something that we hope to continue to see and be able to demonstrate in the years to come.
Well, and that's, yeah, and Mr. Bello made the point before, everything we're doing is a public improvement, so it's not exclusive to this community, it's not shut out. But also think about this, this is a chance for the borough to say, here's tax revenue that we don't have, that we're not getting. Here's a chance for us to leverage this in a public-private partnership of sorts to benefit the borough, short-term and long-term, to benefit its residents, and to really develop this piece of ground into something from nothing. Because whoever did whatever, I don't care what you build a warehouse there, whatever, it's got to get up out of the floodplain. And on average, I mean, just on quantities, there's 320,000 cubic yards of dirt that are being brought in to that site, which compacted will be 260,000 square feet of compacted volume. That's a lot of dirt. So that's how come that number, that number's so big. If you can skip ahead two slides, Keith, I think, so I can wrap this up. One more. So this is the tax revenue that's kind of committed to the project, that we're asking the borough and county to commit, which is 50% of your tax revenue for 20 years. This is a special assessment, so this will go against the homes and the apartments here, that there'll be a incremental piece paid to this. This is, so that covers the debt service. And importantly, the TIF does not impact the borough's other borrowing capacity, so it's not like another loan to the borough or something like that, that impairs your municipally, your government-capped borrowing capacity. This is a separate standalone entity. And this is your surplus revenue each year. And then once the TIF burns off, at the 20-year mark, all that revenue comes to the borough and the county and the school district. The school district has elected not to participate, but the school district has 140,000 cubic yards of dirt, or 100,000 cubic yards of dirt that they're going to make available to us. So that's their contribution, and given current fuel costs, it's a real number. It's, you know, about a $2 million investment to the project. It's sizable. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, in terms of, so everybody's participating in a way. That helps the school district a little bit, helps me, helps the borough. And, so, and the next slide you can skip. I mean, so what I'm really here for tonight was to introduce the TIF more formally, give you an idea of where we are. You know, we've started down here, we're doing preliminary work, we're getting the wall embedded and some other things, but there's, there are some certain, there are strategic periods that have to happen. There'll be, so one of the things I need to, I'm asking council to do tonight, is not to vote, to say yes or no to the TIF, but to appoint one of your, one of your members or a representative of council to the TIF committee that we're going to have the RDA form. So if we could do that tonight, and then that, the way it works, then the next step is that TIF committee will meet, we'll do a whole presentation then, there's two public hearings on it, the county will then vote, you'll vote. If that TIF is approved, then bond council and legal council's engaged to do the loan documents, the loan is then run out, goes to the market, that gets funded, and then there's an administrator, third-party administrator, who administers that money, and it acts like a construction loan where we submit, or draw it down from the borough, we submit, there's a release of money after the work is completed, certified is completed, and then we move out to the project. And then the TIF, and then, the TIF also does have our modeling, has interest carry in it, so we're not asking the borough or anybody else to subsidize any of this. It solely stands alone on that project. And for the edification of council, if the project never got built, if a home, no one ever moved in, no, there is no other guarantee of the borough other than the tax revenue that comes out of that project. So it's not like they can attach other tax, other revenues of the, of the borough. So, and beyond real estate taxes, I mean, there's, there'd be, you know, earned income tax, there's transfer tax every time a house is bought and sold. So Mr. Truman keeps asking me when we're settling the first lots, because there's one on that transfer, then there's a transfer when we, they sell one of the units. So Mr. Truman's very anxious for me to get started here. But I'm here to answer your questions, too, so.
Thank you, obviously, for bringing this up and showing this in the public, the public being here tonight. I guess if we're, would move forward with this tonight, the appropriate person that we would, that we would appoint to the TIF committee would be, would that be our borough manager? Would we be looking maybe at Mr. Wanzak?
President Schenck, you know, not, not having, not having been through a TIF development previously, I can't speak to whether or not it should be an appointed or elected official, but I would say logic would probably dictate that the borough manager should be the, Mr. Maris, so there's only, only one representative from each taxing body?
Usually each taxing body has one member. So, and I believe it can be, it can be the manager, can be designated to speak, because, again, that person's making a recommendation to the TIF committee on behalf of the committee, the borough council then comes back and votes. So I think that's, you know, that works.
Mr. Maris, you know, I, in leading up to this meeting, you know, obviously, we'd had discussions, and as I perceived, the overall nexus or reason for the conversation tonight was to, you know, fully flesh out and do a, do a full public presentation regarding the TIF for the edification of both council and the audience, is, for, for timing purposes, would it be a great hindrance if we were to appoint a TIF committee member at the September 27th meeting via resolution?
I don't think so, because I have to get the county, the RDA, to call for the meeting, so it's really to ask you to support the idea. And then, again, this is step one. Then there's this whole dog and pony show that happens to the TIF committee and to each taxing body in a full with financial models and stuff like that, which will be a much more boring meeting.
Just given the, given the, given the recent rules that Harrisburg passed at the beginning of the year this year, the.
Oh.
I'd feel more comfortable that, you know, we don't.
We didn't have a vote on the agenda, yeah.
There's, there's no new business addressed at a meeting, so.
And, and then the only thing I would say to that is, since on the 27th, I will not be here, I will be in California, so I imagine you could pass the resolution in my absence. But I will happily call in if needed, although hopefully I'll be under the influence of some grape by that point in time.
I don't anticipate any of you here were available, but.
I think it is, it is important that everybody understands that there is a huge public benefit to this beyond the, beyond the balance sheet and the tax revenue, what you presented as far as public amenities and stormwater drainage and all things that we've been wanting to do. Access to the river has been a talking point for years. This all aligns with that very well. So I'm generally in support of it, but, you know, obviously, we're not taking a vote on anything tonight, but thank you for, for coming.
Thank you all, and so council knows.
Other, other items from council, any other questions on that? Before we wrap it up, I know it's a, it's a big topic.
We've gone over the TIF and different kinds of conversations on finance and whatnot many times, so it is one of the more confusing financial products we've discussed, but the benefits of this to the borough overall are substantial, so we'll have action at the next meeting.
Yep. Thank you all. You have a great night.
You too.
Thanks, Tony.
for 1,004 DeKalb Street. We are, we're off a slide, however, let's just pretend that we're not. For council consideration, traffic and parking recommendation for 1,004 DeKalb Street.
Street. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a disabled parking space application as well as a memorandum from the traffic and parking subcommittee recommending that council approve a disabled parking space request for the address in question. Again, that's 1004 DeKalb Street, as well as a review letter from one of our traffic safety officers from the police department, reiterating their, their recommendation to approve. This is, wow. This, this is a, this is a row home along DeKalb Street that has no off-street parking. There is a, a clear and warranted reasoning for the, for the request, a valid, a valid and vetted disability. And neither the traffic and parking subcommittee nor traffic safety officer could see any reason to not proceed with recommending installation or approval, rather, of said parking space application.
And we did have a letter in our packets, I think the, the subcommittee recommended to authorize this. I think we're good. So, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the parking.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Ohio, second by Ms. Nolan to approve the handicapped parking application on 1004 DeKalb Street. Questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Next up, for council consideration, a use authorization request for the Borough Hall parking lot from Growing Bridgeport Together pertaining to the annual Small Business Saturday, tree lighting ceremony, holiday shopping, village festivities. In your packets, members of council, you will find a packet of information, including a request letter and an assembly, assembly permit application from Growing Bridgeport Together. I see that Mr. Gundrum from Growing Bridgeport Together is present in the audience. If any of you had any questions for him, and with that, I will, Mr. Gundrum, if you, if you wish to step forward, please do so. And members of council, if any of you have any questions, please proceed.
Thank you, council, for considering this.
Mr. Gundrum, if you had any, anything to say, go ahead.
I provided a timeline within the letter pretty well, following the same as it was in previous years. We'll have the tent there for the kids' activities as well as vendors set up in the lot.
And this will be the, the same footprint as previous years as well?
Same footprint, yeah.
The request, okay.
And again, this does not have to conflict with other activities that evening, right? So it's in conjunction with, so.
I don't have a question, but more of a comment. I'm really excited to see the market back this year, and I would love to support it.
Great.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thanks. We have a motion from Ms. Funahashi, second by Ms. Alzad. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council on the application?
Before this goes to vote, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you, Ms. Gundrum. And we have that note on the record?
Yes.
Great. Questions from the public? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Gundrum.
Thank you, council.
All right, very good. And next up, again, a use authorization request for the Borough Hall parking lot from the Bridgeport Community Fund. Again, in your, in your packets, members of council, you will find a, a request letter as lo, as well, as well as, excuse me, a public assembly permit application from the Bridgeport Community Fund pursuant to the same evening, Small Business Saturday, November 26th, for the annual festive lights and Santa Claus and all other related sundry activities for, for that evening. I see Mr. Bennett and Mr. Kohut are present. If either of you wish to step forward, please feel free to do so.
Thank you for sticking it out, Mr. Kohut. It's been an evening.
I'm here. Not a problem. I've sat up on your, excuse me, I've sat in your seat before, so I know what it's like. You have the packet. It's under the community fund, and it's the 23rd Annual Festive Lights. And we're asking for use of the parking lot. We've sent a request to the mayor to close the street as we've done in prior years, and for the borough to allow us to use the borough garage to house Santa Claus.
How are the fireworks markets looking this year? I would expect, expensive.
It's the time of the year. We're okay.
Excellent point.
Remember as well, we were very fortunate last year. For those who may not be aware, the fireworks company donated those fireworks to the people of the borough of Bridgeport. Because of Ida coming through and everything that happened at that about a year ago, they were more than happy to come and do this for the, the folks of the borough. So we look to continue this tradition, you know, that was started 23 years ago by former mayor, police chief Jerry Nicola. And it's just one of those things that other communities, as everybody looks around and sees, has now tried to copy. Well, we're Bridgeport. Nobody copies Bridgeport. We know that. So we, I thank you again on behalf of the Festive Lights Committee, the community fund, for your consideration this evening.
And, Mr. Kohut, I want to just point out, last year, I know that there were, after Hurricane Ida and the fireworks being donated, such a nice gesture, the year before that, as we were locking down for the coronavirus, you guys just went above and beyond that year with the display. And I know it meant a lot to folks in town. So
Thank you.
To the organization and everything you guys do every year. Thank you.
We tried. We streamed. We did whatever we could because, again, these, these, this event, as it was started, I don't mean to prolong my speaking, but it was for the people. It was for a time of the year that fireworks weren't normally done when Jerry started this. And I know Sal was around and Ed's been around, and they understand, you know, what Jerry felt when he started all this. And when you look at the eyes of the children who stand out and watch the fireworks, who come and stand in line to see Santa Claus, there is no better feeling that anyone who's been involved with this over the last 23 years can have. And to me, it's, it's probably one of the greatest lasting legacy from, from a man who loved this town more than anybody can know. Thanks, and I appreciate the comments, Keith.
And just one question I wanted to clarify. Sorry, Pete.
Not a problem. Allergies have gotten my voice tied up already, so go ahead.
Just, just so everything's on the record, I'd asked, I'd asked Mr. Gundrum, it's same, same footprint that we've worked with before?
Same footprint, same setup as far as the coordination between the two groups, as far as advertising and everything. We just asked that everything, you know, be, maintain
Of course.
Status quo.
Of course.
Okay?
I think I'm done. There's, there's five more, though. I don't know.
Feel free. Thank you again.
So as to not prolong this, I will make a motion to authorize, allow the authorization.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Ohio, second by Ms. Nolan to approve the authorization for the Bridgeport Community Fund and the Festive Lights usage of the borough property here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I think I missed a step in there about asking for comments, but half the crowd just spoke about it. Any, any other questions? Okay, then that was unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to both Growing Bridgeport Together and the Festive Lights Committee. Next up for council consideration, authorization to advertise ordinance 2022-3, amending chapter 535-15 of Borough Code, which would add a stop sign on southbound Mill Street at the intersection of Sixth and Mill.
I am so excited to see this. There really needs to be a stop sign there. I drive through there all the time. So I will, what's, what's the wording here? Just make the motion? Okay.
I'll second.
The motion's from Ms. Funahashi, second by Ms. Gundrum, to authorize the ordinance as stated, adding the stop sign. Questions or comments from council? Or the public on the stop sign? All right, seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, authorization of a donation from the mayor's general fund expense account toward Growing Bridgeport Together in the amount of $500. And with that, I would just turn it over to Mayor Jack Seer for any, if she has any clarifications or words she'd like to share.
Well, I would just like to add that Mr. Gundrum had asked me for this donation. I know that they lost quite a lot in the flood. And with the holiday market they're trying to put on, I guess it'd be in November, that we were just talking about, looks like they were looking for a little extra help. And given that they truly want to give back to the community and have proven that they want to and have done so, I am eager to support their request.
Yeah, I know that the Growing Bridgeport Together lost a lot through the flood that they had already used. And so I know that this money will be used towards that. So it's, we want those things to continue. People have been asking about it. So with that in mind, I will vote to authorize the donation, knowing that it's going to go to those expenses.
And I would second that.
Thank you. We have the motion from Mr. Ohio, second by Ms. Nolan, to authorize the donation from the mayor's expense account. Any other questions from council? Or from the public?
Again, on this issue, I will recuse.
Thank you, Ms. Gundrum. Go ahead, Mr. Gundrum.
I want to thank mayor and council for considering this. It will help in, in a lot of ways for us to basically get back and start getting some of the supplies and all that helped us to run the markets and all. So that's it for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Gundrum. Other comment? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, authorization to proceed with a purchase to replace the 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle, which was recently declared a total loss. Members of council, the 2019 Tahoe was rear-ended while it was parked in a stationary position, as most parked vehicles are, on Ford Street back on July 11th. It was after about a month and a half of hemming and hawing from the insured driver's carrier, Progressive, we finally took it out of their hands to determine whether or not it was a total loss, and asked our carrier to declare the loss, and then just ultimately subrogate with, with Progressive. Compound that, and subrogate basically, if anybody doesn't, subrogate means, rather than if, if, if you're not at fault as the insured, as the insured, the other, the other guy's insurance company is at fault, but they're not paying you what you believe the, the amount to be. Sometimes, if you're fortunate enough, you have the option to implore your insurance carrier to pay the, the rightful amount, and then subrogate, which is basically battle with, the, have your insurance company duke it out with their insurance company to recoup the total amount. The Progressive had quoted a replacement, or initial quote of $20,000, but that didn't take into consideration the rental car that would be required to supplement our fleet for the next three to four months, the fact that it would take three to four months to get all of the parts and labor to, to get that Tahoe whole. And our, our body shop hadn't even torn the Tahoe apart, apart to see what additional supplemental costs would be in there, such as, you know, if you hit a car that's an automatic transmission when it's in park, you probably screwed up the transmission, too, and that's a costly repair among the rest of the Pandora's box that happens when you actually start opening up the vehicle. So, long story short, we are short a Chevy Tahoe now. We also have another vehicle that is still down at Butch's Shop. We are trying to get it inspected and road-ready, and not terribly successful at this juncture. Chief Beretta is seeking authorization to, from council, to purchase another police vehicle. Normally, when Chief Beretta seeks authorization to do so, he already has the vehicle quote in hand and has that ready to present, has a dollar figure for council to, to mull over when they consider for the vote. Because this all happened so quickly, right before the agenda, and because we are down two police vehicles, and a third, because the 2022 Ford Hybrid that we bought earlier this year, the parts to completely get that outfitted and road-ready are still on back order, we're down three of our police fleet. Chief Beretta is asking for authorization from council to proceed with the purchase of a replacement vehicle, when he can find one. Obviously, once he and I have sourced that vehicle and have a, an exact dollar amount, we will bring it back for retroactive authorization and approval from council. But he and I are seeking authorization to proceed with that purchase as quickly as possible because they are limping along as it currently stands.
And, and Mr. Truman, obviously, just for the record, you had said, the two of you, this is something you're in support of, to put it mildly.
Correct, yes. I mean, Ford, Ford, just the, the deadline to order a new Ford police vehicle was, last was September 8th for a 2023, so we missed that. I believe Chief Beretta is now looking for other options, you know, in terms of current stock at, at varying regional dealerships.
The car was totaled. We need a new car. I vote to authorize going forward.
So moved.
The motion from Mr. Ohio, second by Ms. Nolan, to authorize the purchase to replace the Tahoe. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And that concludes that portion of the meeting. We can now proceed to unfinished business. Are there any members of council with unfinished business this evening? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share this evening?
Very quick, very quick report for the Sustainability Committee. Our Fall Cleanup Day will be happening on Saturday, September 24th. We will meet outside Borough Hall, and I will provide everybody with trash bags, gloves. We will also be having lunch catered by local Bridgeport businesses after the cleanup event is over. And the Bridgeport Business Association will be sponsoring shirts for us this year. So I have been told that they will be safety pink, and I am very excited to all day say on Saturdays we wear pink. So I hope.
I'm sorry, what time does it start?
I believe I said 10:00 AM, but I'll say it again. 10:00 AM, just to make sure everybody heard it in case I missed it.
Don't miss that. I will also add on for the Community Events Committee. We have our last movie night coming up this Saturday, the 17th, at Sunset. Keith, what is our movie that we picked?
Is the, the new Space Jam.
Oh, that's right. The hottest movie around. And we also have our Community 5K coming up on October 1st. We'd love to get the signups going for that. So if you know anyone that likes to run, go ahead and encourage them to sign up and test your skills on our hills. Thanks.
All right. Thank you both very much. Seeing no further committee reports, we can proceed to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just have a few things to report. Last month, I started an email newsletter based on responses I got back from my resident survey. Many residents noted they liked hearing about updates through emails. So please stay tuned for regular emails if you signed up. And if you haven't and you want to, please reach out to me via email or Facebook or in person to sign up. Towards the end of August, I helped the fire department Uh, towards the end of August, I helped the Fire Department host their first spray-down event. Many of the kids in town came down to Borough Hall, to the parking lot to check out one of our fire trucks and to get sprayed by the truck and ended up having a blast. So, thank you to the Fire Department for making this awesome event happen. And right after the spray-down, I helped represent Frosty Falls in our most recent Battle of the Boroughs competition, which was focused on local ice cream shops. While we made sure to have each shop celebrated for their unique aspects, I think it's pretty obvious that Frosty was the true winner. Um, a big thank you goes out to the Mayors of Conshohocken and West Conshohocken and the Norris Town Council President for participating, and for all of the ice cream shops, especially Laura from Frosty Falls, and to everybody who came out to support her. Uh, it was really not a competition for support from the community, uh, we had a lot, so thank you. Um, it really shows that Bridgeport residents care about their community and local businesses. Uh, I wanted to share that over Labor Day weekend, the Police Department hosted a written and physical exam to help determine who our next full-time police officer will be. It was a pretty exciting morning getting to see all the talented candidates, and we're going to be sure to keep residents informed about the process. Uh, at our last meeting, I stated my intention to begin a new big community event, the Bridgeport Founder's Day, and I'm pleased to announce that the Steering Committee has been decided upon and that we're expected to host our first meeting next Tuesday, September 20th. So, thank you to everybody who's volunteering to help. And if you're interested in still joining, uh, please let me know ASAP so we can get you onto this committee from the very beginning. Everyone is welcome, nobody's turned away. And finally, um, this month's office hours will be taking place on Wednesday, September 28th, in my office, on the first floor of Borough Hall from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, moving on to new business, are there any matters of new business to discuss this evening?
Uh, Mr. Truman and, and Council, I can mention one. In your packets, there is an email from Pastor Tim Dooner, uh, with the Presbyterian Church. Um, he's the, the President of the Upper Marionary Community Cupboard Board, um, and he laid out some details in that email about what they've been doing. I think everybody here is aware of the work they did, uh, post-Ida in Bridgeport, as well as the ongoing food pantry work, uh, that they do, and, um, if you look at the folks they serve within the Upper Marionary School District, uh, a more than significant cross-section of that is, are their Bridgeport residents. So, Pastor Dooner asked us if we'd consider supporting them, um, financially. Uh, I did respond to him, I, I sent you that letter, or Keith sent the letter, I did respond with a couple of questions, uh, to Pastor Dooner. Um, I was curious, uh, about the funds that were expended to height. I know we, we forwarded a lot of money their way or, or sent a lot of donors their way, um, with funds to help residents after the hurricane, so I was going to ask him about how, if those funds got refunded by the county or if they got picked up by FEMA or just sort of how all of those numbers work, so we had an idea of that. Uh, I also asked him about any of the other local government entities, if they were sponsoring or donating and, and what, what amounts. So, those were the questions that I have, uh, but Council, I just wanted to throw out there, read that letter. If you have any other questions, you know, send them to Pastor Dooner, send them to me, and I can forward them. Just get a handle on that, and then maybe at the, at the next meeting, we can throw it on the agenda.
All right, thank you, President Schenk. Uh, moving forward to open forum and announcements, are there any announcements from, uh, anybody at the dais this evening? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to public comment. Are there any public comments tonight? All right, seeing none, Council could certainly entertain-
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, thank you. It's 9:22, we're adjourned.